Good evening, everyone. I'd like to bring the meeting to order. And at the late time of four minutes past six, thank you, everyone, for being here on this beautiful sunny evening.
Let's think it through.
We have one item today, which is the superintendent evaluation item. And it's going to be broken into two parts. I'm going to hand over to Mrs. Dana White, who is going to talk through the recent final work of the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. I'd like to thank everyone who was on that committee for the work that they volunteered to do and the time that they gave. And then, this is the meeting where every member of our joint school committee has the chance to read comments that will be entered into the minutes pertaining to the superintendent evaluation. If people do not want to make any comments, they do not have to. But this is the chance for us to enter comments that will be put in minutes and therefore post clarity. I'd like to thank everyone for listening to the request for the comments to be kept to a certain time. And generally, most people have done that. I appreciate it. But this is an important occasion, and I appreciate everyone's efforts to keep it to some form of brevity. I know the region have a long meeting after this, and people have been at -- Central office people have been at work since very early. So, thank you very much. Dana, can I hand over to you?
I would love it. All right, so, as you know, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, there were four of us. Adrian from Dover, Kate from Sherburne, and Ann and I from the region. We were tasked with a few things, clarifying the evaluation process, which hopefully we did in a few iterations of the memo, as it took a few -- since we hadn't done it in four years. It did take us a few times to make sure we had it right. We then distributed the information, the substantive report that you were being asked to fill in, as well as Dr. Kio's self-evaluation, which hopefully you found helpful in filling out your own. We then received back from all 16 individuals, step one through three, which we then combined as logically as we could in the following manner. So, we took a spreadsheet. We -- step one, we assigned a value for everybody's box that they had checked, assigned a value zero to four, so that we could be able to average them. And then, in step two, we assigned values zero to three, with zero being either did not meet or unsatisfactory up through exceeded. We then took both a mean and a median across all of them, just to make sure that mean and median came out the same. And if you need a refresher of statistics, I'm sure there's a senior from AP Stats somewhere that can remind you about it. So, the mean and median came out the same, and as you will find in your packets, what we will be submitting to DESI. So, we put it back into this form, and it is follows in step one, to assess the progress towards goals. Professional practice goal met, student learning goal met, district improvement goal met. In step two, the assessment of performance on standards. Standard one is structural leadership proficient. Standard two, management and operations proficient. Standard three, family and community engagement proficient. And standard four, professional culture proficient. Giving Dr. Kio an overall rating from the three school committees, the rating of proficient. We also entered the following comment that will go to DESI when this is submitted. For fiscal year 2018, members of the Dover School Committee, Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee, and Sherburne School Committees completed individual end-of-cycle substantive evaluation reports for Superintendent Dr. Andrew Kio. Based on the ratings averaged from all 16 school committee members, individual education evaluations, sorry, can't read today. Dr. Kio has achieved an overall rating of proficient in his first year as superintendent of the public schools of Dover and Sherburne. At an open meeting on May 1st, 2018, members from all three school committees read individual comments submitted as part of this evaluation process. These comments are captured in the official minutes of the meeting. So, that's what will go to DESI. Please note that the superintendent evaluation subcommittee did not do any curating of comments, no deliberation on it. It was purely a sign of value and come up with a mean and a median. So, hopefully, we -- you guys feel like we did our job. And then, I would definitely remind people, if you want Dr. Kio to receive your entire evaluation, he is certainly open to reading them. I've had two requests from regional. Feel free to do that. And also reminding you that he also made his time available this summer, if you want to go in and talk to him about anything further, either in that evaluation or outside of it.
Or in general.
Or in general. So, that --
We'll send something out to invite people and invite people to make a work of their service.
And with that, I turn it back to Adrian.
Thank you.
Oh, if you have any -- sorry, any questions on that, I guess I should say.
Can you speak to step four?
We did not fill that in. That was -- we had said that in the initial memo, that we didn't think that we had enough data to be able to do that with integrity. So, we didn't ask for that input from members. Any other questions? All right. Adrian, back to you.
Thank you. I would again just repeat what Dana said, that if you would like your form to be sent in entirety to Andrew, please, absolutely, please do that. And again, if you'd like any more time with Andrew, or some -- on any thoughts you've had during this process, or anything else, he's going to make time available for that. So, thank you. Okay, so, this is a chance for all of us to read comments that we would like to be put in the minutes. The comments that you read, if you haven't done already, could you please send to Cheryl and Gossel, and she will put together a document, if possible, that will then make it easy for the processed comments to go into the minutes. If you can't do that, or don't have a document with you, Amy will absolutely take care of that, if you can't send it to Cheryl.
Can I just say quick, if you make changes, like if you've got something printed out and you make edits tonight, can you please send your edited copy?
Yeah, thank you.
Because it's what's read today that needs to go, not what you plan to say.
Thanks.
Point of clarification?
Yeah.
It's just comments, there's no discussion, there's no --
Correct. Absolutely.
Editorializing.
Correct, no back and forth.
Okay.
So, again, I appreciate people's understanding of myself requesting for a little bit of brevity. There's one person who asked for some more time, and out of respect for his many years served, and really, out of a desire in his last meeting, to have one more chance to be wrapped in the warm embrace of Michael. Michael, I'll ask the ego first.
No, I don't need to do that. No, you can go first. You sure you don't want to warm things up?
Right now.
Okay.
No, no.
Rip the space made off, Michael.
So, I need -- I rated Dr. Kio as needs improvement. It was difficult to provide an objective rating due to a lack of what DESI defines as evidence that we should use as part of this process. I provided my concerns to the evaluation committee, how we have failed to establish practices that would assure that we could reach an informed opinion about any superintendent in performance, including Dr. Kio. And I'd be happy to make those comments available to other school committee members in an appropriate and legal environment, or manner. My greatest concern involves superintendent school committee member communications. Dr. Kio is fully aware of our board governance structure. 16 members was an existing condition. So, I was profoundly disappointed to find out, within months of his tenure, that Dr. Kio wanted to restrict the free flow of information between school committee members and his office. There's simply not a legal basis for us to operate as a school system where only three elected members, not 16, directly communicate with the superintendent. At our last meeting, a member proposed we study the impact of full regionalization upon our school system. It was at this point that I feel Dr. Kio should have offered his viewpoint on the unwieldy nature of our existing governance structure. It's no longer viable or appropriate for us to operate as a committee of three with 13 silent partners. It's our -- if our superintendent cannot function with 16 school committee members, then this alone is a justification for a regionalization study. Each member here is elected with the expectation of our constituents that their experiences and viewpoints would be fully valued. No other elected or appointed board in our towns operates in a two-tiered manner. My concern about communications increased during the strategic planning process. A critical element to creating a shared vision between a board and the CEO of any organization is a free flow of relevant data that assesses the organization's strengths, weaknesses, and provides voice to key constituencies. The Center for Public Education and initiative, the National School Boards Association, identified eight characteristics of effective school boards. Number five, demands boards be data savvy. Specific to this recommendation, and I quote, "Board members in high-achieving districts identified specific student needs through data and justified decisions based on that data." In addition, board members were not shy about discussing trends. Information sharing between the superintendent and the school committee is a vital process. In the case of one district, the study found, the board began a fundamental rethinking based on goals and data, hired a new superintendent with a foundation and instructional improvement. Together, the board and the superintendent developed goals and performance indicators to rank and monitor school progress. This process ultimately helped build trust among school and community leaders. I believe Dr. Kio possesses the skills and experience to ensure that the committees that oversee the public schools of Dover and Sherburne adopt and effectively demonstrate the eight characteristics of effective school boards. But collectively, we earn a needs improvement. It's my sincere hope that during Dr. Kio's tenure, we will see a renaissance in our governance structure and practices. But until that occurs, I think we believe we place our community's investment in public education at risk.
Brilliant, thank you very much. Ann, could you go next?
Do we really have to just go around the room?
Well, yeah.
Watch out the other side. Is there a net? All right, Dr. Kio's first year has provided the districts with a welcome sense of stability and the ability to think long-term. While searching for a new superintendent, continual improvement for the district was a stated goal. While Dr. Kio had a strong first year, in the spirit of making great greater, I am focusing on a few areas where adjustment could lead to even stronger outcomes. Much of Dr. Kio's focus this year has appropriately been on the creation of a strong strategic plan. While he included a wide variety of DS community members in the formation of this plan, members of some marginalized communities remain unheard. More outreach is needed to meet those who feel marginalized where they feel comfortable, or their voices will continue to be overshadowed. Having and using more quantifiable outcomes and specific data points to inform the strategic plan will provide meaningful evidence to help continue forward momentum in the classroom and beyond. Dr. Kio has made a concerted effort to empower the administrative team, especially building leaders. Progress has certainly been made, but there are still areas where the building teams would benefit from stronger guidance. Continuing to determine the appropriate amount of oversight to help each member of the administrative team perform to the best of their abilities is essential. National events, as well as things happening on our campuses, has made clear and effective communication, as well as cultural proficiency, essential. The tone of Dr. Kio's district-wide emails has been appropriate, and the We Are DS messages has been positive. However, as Dr. Kio has noted, there is more work to be done in this area, in this district-wide area, and there are more -- there's some missteps on the building level that indicate continued modeling and guidance from the superintendent is required. Kudos to Dr. Kio for his efforts to seek balance in the quest for school safety and for reminding the community of the need to focus on socio-emotional health as an essential component in the effort to keep students and staff safe. More needs to be done, but Dr. Kio is a district moving in the right direction. With the help of Don Fattori and building leaders, Dr. Kio successfully navigated his first tri-district dual-town budget. Continued work to find efficiency within our budgets is essential, as we're working with both towns' administrative bodies, as our regional district requires, and our elementary schools would benefit from cooperation between the two towns. Hopefully, this year has created a strong base from which the schools of Dover and Sherburne will continue to improve, and will continue to serve all of our students.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Lauren? Nothing? Thank you. Maggie?
Dover, Sherburne, and our regional school district have grown in positive ways under the leadership of Dr. Kio. Charged with creating a strategic plan, he engaged many to develop a thoughtful plan to guide us over the next few years. He focused on school culture and its key importance to the success of our schools. He addressed urgent issues that exist around cultural responsiveness and understanding, and has dedicated time and resources to build capacity for this work, including a concrete and student-friendly initiative, We Are DS. He has proactively begun an examination of our school's security system and protocol, drawing from expert consultants and an ongoing security audit to inform our actions. But hasn't limited this examination to just technical security issues, rather leading the district to see a positive school culture and climate are part of detaching school violence. Dr. Kio has established clear lines of communication between administration and school committee with a goal of efficiency and keeping communication clear and manageable for all. He's established a good working relationship with his central office colleagues, as well as building principals, and I applaud his goal to build more intentional formal communication to the public from central office in the coming months. Dr. Kio's work with the budget management of all stakeholder -- and management of all stakeholder groups that drive the budget process demonstrated thoughtful and thorough care and detail. The budget was directly related to school and district goals, and was mindful of the financial constraints and concerns of both Dover and Sherburne. Dr. Kio worked along with Miss Fattori and other town officials to understand the current complex issues surrounding health insurance, and to develop a plan to offer employees that seek to maintain cost and be fair to all involved. I look forward to seeing how Dr. Kio will work in the coming months to address improvements in hiring, recruitment, supervision, and evaluation of staff in the DS region. This is an area he has set as a goal to improve, and I agree that how we choose and support and grow our faculty and administration is the highest leverage tool we have for improving our excellent schools for future generations.
Thank you very much. Claire?
Being the longest-serving member of the three committees, and I have sat in this seat through this process with five superintendents and interim superintendents. With confidence, I can say that while we are often referred to as small districts, that does not mean we face any less significant issues or concerns than larger districts. I have seen our three districts function as one, and as such, we came together in our search to fill the superintendent role. That search took us on a journey to define what we were looking for in the superintendent and define the needs of the district for the coming years. Dr. Kio this year brought more than we required for the job. His knowledge and experience has allowed him to keep the district running in a forward direction while working to define our strategic vision for the upcoming years. Like chairs in previous years and current years, I have been able to have probably more one-on-one time with Dr. Kio than others. But rest assured that that does not mean he is unaware of what committee members think and what have brought before him in casual conversations, organized meetings, and other ways that allow members to express not only their ideas, but concerns and issues of our constituents. At all times, Andrew's focus has been on what's right for the district, what will move the districts forward academically, socially, and emotionally, and on what we need to do operationally. It was a busy year with many issues, including an MOU for appendix C, the teacher's stipends, and changes in healthcare. I don't foresee the busyness of the district changing, and Dr. Kio has proved this year that he and his administrative team can do many things at once. It is our responsibility to prioritize our work and work with him to continue on our forward path in the coming year.
Thank you. So, my comments. I would like to thank Andrew Kio for his work shepherding the schools of Dover and Sherburne through this academic year. I believe he's worked with his leadership team, students, teachers, administrators, parents, towns, stakeholders, and the community at large confidently, reassuringly, and with a full measure of competence. I would urge him to be bold in the improvements and changes that he brings in the coming years, and not be held back by either community conservatism or any fear of failure. This is a community that would support investment in our schools and is prone to support plans for investment in our children. Andrew himself is a great asset for DS, and I would encourage him to think about how he himself can communicate regularly and broadly with the parents of all four schools in the years ahead. And lastly, I would like to thank him for the work that was needed for formulating the strategic plan for DS schools. Listening to him present the plan was both exciting and inspirational, and I'm looking forward to seeing the implementation of those very many tasks over the coming months. That's all.
This was not planned or coordinated, I promise you. I believe that the policy of communicating only through the chair should be reconsidered. I think our members are professionally courteous, and I don't think that it would be a problem, and I think it would benefit relationships if it were reconsidered.
That's it. That's it. Henry?
Dr. Kio is about to complete his first year as superintendent of the Dover and Sherburne School District. I have been impressed with the manner in which Dr. Kio has been able to blend his experience as a school administrator in past districts, his personal Dover Sherburne experience, and many hours of meeting with multiple school and town groups to craft the strategic plan. The strategic plan incorporated findings from these meetings and important feedback and suggestions from the district's leadership team. I also want to thank -- pardon me, I also want to highlight Dr. Kio's commitment to creating an inclusive environment for all students via programs like hashtag We Are DS. This will be very important for years to come at Dover Sherburne. I have been pleased with how Dr. Kio conducts school committee meetings, his attention to everyone's comments, and the consistent view on how all decisions could impact school committees' responsibilities and the district's core values. Dover Sherburne is a wonderful community, and I'm very pleased with our accomplishments, and I'm looking forward to how Dr. Kio can continue to help drive and support our direction in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Henry. Dana?
All right. In my six years on the regional school committee, managing the superintendent search process twice that brought Dr. Kio to Dover Sherburne is perhaps my biggest accomplishment. At the time, I thought he was the best fit because of his collaborative manner, thoughtfulness, listening skills, respect for all stakeholders, and unwavering support for all students' abilities to learn. After his first year in the role, I still believe that. From the search, I had very high expectations. I think that the approved strategic plan is an excellent start, and the action items and evaluation benchmarks to be developed show that there's valuable work ahead for all stakeholders. If Dr. Kio can execute on the strategic plan, our outcomes will be strong. For this evaluation, I saw areas where Dr. Kio performed well. One, his focus on the social and emotional well-being and safety of students and staff. Hashtag We Are DS is not just a hashtag, but the beginning of important dialogues and actions. Two, his fostering of a positive work environment, which will harness the strengths of a large team of administrators and staff. And three, his work with the business office and administrators to deliver budgets already accepted by both finance committees and expectantly citizens of both towns. As this was Dr. Kio's first year at DS, there were a few areas where I saw good foundation work, yet areas for continued improvement. One, I look forward to deeper use of data in decision-making and continued commitment to our educator evaluation system. Both tools hold educators and administrators accountable for student learning. Two, like many others, I look forward to development of a communication plan with clear, consistent guidelines for content, messaging, and channel. Such a plan would be helpful for Dr. Kio, with the benefit, yet potential drawback, of living in our community with its accompanying familiarity. Early in his tenure, Dr. Kio and I talked about the superintendent's role in both leading and managing a school district. Managing day-to-day operations and unexpected items can easily eat up a work week, leaving little time to focus on the big picture, which is what will lead us to the next level. It's my hope and expectation that by using the new strategic plan as a guide, Dr. Kio will be able to balance the time and energy required to both manage and to lead the public schools of Dover and Sherburne. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Brooke?
Thank you.
Declines, thank you. Rachel?
Thank you.
Kate?
I have mine and Jennifer's, because she's sick. She did want it red, is that okay?
Sure. Do you want to tell us which ones which?
This one's mine.
Let's guess.
They're actually kind of similar, but we did not plan this. This is mine. Dr. Kio's transition to Dover Sherburne has been smooth and energizing for the school community. I was impressed that he spent many of his first weeks inviting people from all parts of the Dover Sherburne schools to meet with him, to learn what was important and what was concerning to them. After these meetings, he spent a great deal of time and thought putting his strategic plan together. It is now exciting to see the plan formalized. I look forward to learning more about the action steps that emerged during the next phase of this process, and how they will play out day-to-day in our schools. Dr. Kio has high standards for the success of all students, but not only in academics. His support of the We Are DS initiative, cultural responsiveness training for students and staff, and concern for his students' physical and mental well-being reflect his mission to educate the whole student. He has also clearly demonstrated these values through his letters to parents. I look forward to the year ahead and watching what he has set in motion become reality. This is Jennifer's. Dr. Kio's transition this year has been a smooth one. His entry meetings with various stakeholders and the creation of his strategic priorities have gone according to plan. Dr. Kio is transparent, honest, thoughtful, visible, and accessible. He has both the tangibles and the intangibles of a strong leader, and always puts the children at the forefront of what he does, valuing the whole-child approach. He has accurately identified the areas that he personally needs to work on and how he will do that. His strategic plan, developed by listening during many meetings with members of the DS community and leadership team, has identified the key focus areas that will help all of our students thrive. His belief in the We Are DS initiative is wholehearted and genuine, and just what we need as we strive to make sure that DS is a place where everyone feels welcome, understood, and engaged. The school committee meetings and associated information have been well-organized and comprehensive, especially during the budget season. I trust his expertise and opinion and look forward to his future contributions as a leader of our district.
Thank you.
Clear goals have been stated, and Dr. Kio is moving in a positive direction to complete those. Clear definition has been given for professional, student, and district-wide goals. The professional piece is on plan with meetings and standards set for the administration, and the student goals have clear communication, and the academic piece is well-planned. The additional emphasis for the emotional well-being and treating the whole student is a clear link to enhance the academic experience. As for instructional leadership, management and operations, and professional culture, all areas are on par. But I find the communication and willingness to interact with the family and community at large to exceed the standard. Additionally, taking steps to address student safety, both physical and emotional, is a positive to create a better academic environment. By addressing the stressors on students and taking steps to mitigate what we can has a favorable impact on student learning. Dr. Kio has expressed a dedication to see this through.
Thank you. Let's go.
This evaluator believes Dr. Kio achieved a met-performance rating and progress toward his defined first-year goals after entry as superintendent, and that he is proficient against the four performance standards for superintendent. This evaluator further recognizes elements within the strategic plan that address opportunities within the standards for continued growth as a leader of this regional district. Dr. Kio's success in developing this strategic plan established a foundation for his work moving forward, and his effort to seek input from all stakeholders is recognized. However, the challenge persists to effectively continue to engage those stakeholders and the community as a whole as decisions are weighed against the plan and its priorities in the landscape of Dover and Sherburne financial constraints.
Thank you. Thank you.
Michael? Point of order. I can certainly get this within two minutes. It might not be as pleasant. It's up to you. I do either one. I could read it normally, or I could read it Kennedy-like.
Read it normally, sir.
Okay. Thank you. And I peg these to the evaluation section, so I'll read those into the record as well. 2A3, Dr. Kio demonstrates exemplary work in role modeling relative to student safety, health, and social-emotional needs evidenced by hashtag We Are DS, culture of care, professional development, and community communications. 2D1, I received guidance that restricting direct school committee member communications with the superintendent is legally improper. At a minimum, it was not taken up by school committees as required by law. This practice is detrimental to the proper oversight responsibility of non-chair school committee members and chills the development of appropriate working relationships between non-chair school committee members and Dr. Kio. Additionally, this restriction -- accordingly, this restriction should be discontinued. 2D2 and 4F, I observe situations where Dr. Kio seemed to experience judgment lapses by compromising his commitments and/or core beliefs in favor of being agreeable, rather than demonstrating courage in his conviction despite influential dissenting opinions. 2E, long-term operational forecasting and budgeting is necessary to help ensure that future resources are effectively managed to meet projected needs in light of the district's vision, mission, and goals. 3A1, Dr. Kio demonstrates exemplary passion for the DS community and -- 3A1, Dr. Kio demonstrates exemplary passion for the DS community and leads by example relative to empathy and inclusion and primacy of students' social, emotional, and physical well-being. He is a true role model for a culture of caring and compassion. 3A2, I recommend that Dr. Kio expand already strong community and governmental outreach to further leverage the wealth of available non-school resources. 3B1 and 3B2, given the myriad of social-emotional challenges that are presently being faced nationally and experienced locally, an even greater effort to engage and educate the non-school-based community in the culture of caring would be beneficial.
Thank you. Thank you. Excellent. Um, Kate, thank you everybody for all the time taken. Andrew, would you like to...
I would love to. Yeah. That's why I just...
So, I just want to thank people for their time they put in, that I informed, the very thoughtful comments here on behalf of the subcommittee. Thank you.
Very well put. That's, uh, actually exactly what I was going to say, which is, thank you so much, because I actually really do believe in the value of, of getting feedback from people. I've often said that good educators are sensitive people, but good educators are sensitive people. So, it's not always easy to get, uh, feedback, but, uh, but it's critical for me to hear it and to, and I appreciate the kind, kindness as well. Uh, there were so many nice things said. Of course, naturally, perhaps it's part of my DS background, I tend to hone in on the things that are, you know, areas for work, but, um, but all of it is very helpful to me, and, uh, I do commit myself to continuing our work, uh, and continuing leading the district. I do very much care about where we end up and, uh, ultimately about our students. Uh, I have personal goals to know the students better, to know the families better, to communicate better, and I also especially appreciate the, uh, the ideas that, or the comments put forth about being bolder. And, uh, that's not always easy as a leader to really say what's on your mind. We get, um, accustomed to trying to keep people happy in these jobs, but I'm not sure I need to do that as much anymore, and that perhaps, uh, I would benefit and the system would benefit from my, just speaking my mind more often. So that's actually really good feedback for me, and I appreciate that. So, um, I also appreciate the time you guys put into it, the committee, and, um, these are not easy. Public comments aren't easy for superintendents, but they're not easy for school committee members either. So I really do appreciate the thought that you put into these, and, um, I'll go home and review them in a, hopefully in a setting where I can actually concentrate them. Much appreciation. Thank you.
Okay. So again, uh, just a reminder, as I said at the beginning, that if you, what Ann said, if you did make edited comments compared, compared to what you did send to Cheryl earlier, please send the edited comments to her. Um, and again, look for, uh, uh, an email from Andrew's office, um, offering time in the summer to, to discuss anything people might want. There is, uh, one consent agenda, um, action that's required is the approval of minutes of April the 10th. Did we have any questions on the consent agenda? Yes.
I was not here, but I did watch the tape, so can I vote then?
You can even vote if you weren't there.
Yes, you can. Um... Kate? Uh, may I have a motion for...
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Thank you.
Motion of reason?
Second. Motion Dover.
Second.
Thank you, Brooke. And second, Rachel, thank you. Uh, Sherburne, all is in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed?
Nope.
Reason? All is in favor?
Hi.
Dover, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Okay, move to a term. Move to a general.
And before we do that, I, were you gonna...
No, go ahead.
I don't know what to say.
Oh, I didn't either. I just wanted to thank Michael again in his last joint call.
It's Michael.
And?
Right. And that's where I'm thinking alike to say, thank you guys.
You're welcome. Okay, let me have experience with five superintendents, but we... So, meeting adjourned at 6:38. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.